Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome to the Monday, May 18th, 2020 special City Council meeting. This is another virtual meeting. We have our full council present and many staff. And we appreciate all the work it takes to run these meetings. So, thank you, everybody, for being here and Charmaine for working so hard to set this all up and for all the people who are present online. I'd like to start with calling to roll call, Charmaine.
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
I'm here.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
All right. Next, we're going to do approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, move to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the agenda is approved. Next, we have written communications. And City Clerk, if you could, I know we have written communications. If you could explain how it is that people are to send in written communications so that those listening who are interested in next week know exactly how to do it and why we only can read a certain amount of what we receive.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So, we do have a process for accepting written communications during the stay-at-home period of the Governor's order. And that process is to send an email to the council@bellevue.gov email address with the subject line of written communications and then the date of the meeting you are wishing to provide your comments. If your comments will, if your comments are related to a subject that is on that evening's agenda, then that, that comment can be considered as a written communication for that meeting. We still adhere to the three people per side, either in opposition or in support of any one particular item. And that is how you would qualify to get onto written communications. So, the council has received a number of written communications related to items on tonight's agenda specifically. And pursuant to the rules that I just went over, I'll read the first three comments on either side of each topic. And tonight, it looks like that'll be a total of about six comments read into the record. The remaining comments have been provided in your desk packet for the council's review and are also in the council@bellevue.gov in back for your review as well. So, with that, Mayor, if you would like me to proceed, I will go ahead with the written communications.
Yes, please. Thank you.
No, sorry. Technical issue right here. So, the first item is, the first comments are related to item 6J on tonight's agenda, which is on your consent calendar. First comment is from Mark Tobin. Comment reads as follows. During the most extraordinary crisis of our lifetime, surely there's a better use of city funds than to beautify existing and functional electrical towers in the Spring District. Please let common sense prevail and stop this nonsense. Comment number two, related to the same topic, is from Leslie Geller. Dear Bellevue City Council members, I write with concern about tonight's vote on spending 1.6 million to replace two lattice towers in the developing Spring District with steel monopoles to make it look nice. I cannot believe that the city is actually even considering spending this money, especially during a year or two or three when city revenues will be diminished due to the pandemic. I urge you to not approve this reckless and large expenditure for what sure seems to be an appeasement to the Spring District developer. The existing towers are functional, so why would they need to be replaced, especially at taxpayers' expense? If the developer wants to replace the towers, it should pay for it 100%. On that topic, the council received an additional six emails that were also in opposition or shared concern with, related to that particular project. Moving on to the next item, this is related to item 8A. And that is adoption of ordinance 6513. This comment is from John Fisher from Inland Construction. Dear councilmembers, on behalf of the Inland Group, I am writing to urge your adoption of ordinance number 6513. This ordinance would establish an interim official control setting reduced parking minimum parking standards in the land use code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service. The Inland Group is working with Congregations for the Homeless and Horizon Housing Alliance to meet a critical need for affordable housing and shelter in the city of Bellevue. The proposed project on East Gate Way on land currently owned by King County will create more than 350 units of affordable workforce housing. Housing for individuals existing homelessness and a permanent men's shelter. This project will support the affordable housing strategy adopted by the council in 2017 and fulfill a longstanding commitment by the city to cite a permanent men's shelter. As an experienced developer and owner of affordable housing, the Inland Group is passionate about building properties that are long-term community assets. Inland strives to create places that advance the health and well-being of working people who drive our economy, including many essential workers who are on the front lines during the current crisis. Inland competes for residence, which means our properties need to meet the demands of the marketplace, including providing adequate parking that serves our residents and that avoids negative impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. Inland has and will continue to engage in research that right sizes its parking investments with actual market demand. Inland's ability to develop affordable housing in high-cost markets like Bellevue depends on thoughtful, data-driven policies that maximize limited public and private dollars. Ordinance number 6513 would advance the city's affordable housing objectives by prioritizing needed housing and amenities rather than expensive parking stalls. Thank you for your support. If I can be a resource on this or other affordable housing issues, please do not hesitate to contact me. The next comment related to ordinance 6513 is from Jane Broom. Dear councilmembers, in January of 2019, over 15 months ago, Microsoft announced its $500 million commitment toward affordable housing solutions in King County. At the announcement, nine mayors, including the mayor of Bellevue, signed a pledge to help break down local policy barriers and provide incentives to substantially increase the supply of middle and low-income housing for all households in our community. Since then, Microsoft increased its commitment to 750 million and has made several investments, including the preservation of over 200 middle-income housing units in Bellevue. We've also had many conversations with the Bellevue mayor, city council, and city leadership around implementation of its 2017 affordable housing strategy and ways the city might go further. Data from our continued collaboration with Cillow shows a gap of approximately 34,000 middle- and low-income affordable housing units in Bellevue in late 2019, which does not take into account the staggering impact COVID-19 will have on housing supply and affordability. Simply put, those struggling to find housing, they can afford, they can afford, need our help now more than ever. With this in mind, and as the city of Bellevue's largest employer, we strongly support ordinance 6513 and urge the council to pass the emergency legislation today. Reducing parking requirements for multifamily buildings near transit and frequent transit service reduces housing project or production costs. We look forward to continuing this work together as the year continues. Thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments. That was Jane Broom from Microsoft Corporation. The third and final comment that will be read on the ordinance 6513 in support is from Gabrielle Grant. I am writing to express my support for the proposed ordinance setting reduced minimum parking standards in the land use code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service. As both a developer of workforce housing and a board member of nonprofit housing developer Bellwether Housing, I know that high parking minimums can be a major impediment to the creation of housing affordable to the working people of our region. Amending the land use code to set reduced minimum parking standards for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service is a common sense move that will help the city of Bellevue and its residents. In addition to those three comments, 11 other emails were received prior to the 3:00 PM cutoff in support of this ordinance. Eight additional emails were received after the 3:00 PM cutoff. And the final comment to be read this evening into the record is related to the adoption of the CDBG-CV ordinance. This comment is from Beth Osborne from Symetra. I write to express Symetra's support for the ordinance allocating community development block grant funding for homeless services, financial assistance, childcare, and legal assistance for domestic violence survivors that will support our most vulnerable neighbors in this unprecedented health crisis. In addition to the city's actions to support small businesses and to funding emergency rental assistance, today's ordinance will assist our community by providing needed resources to people experiencing homelessness or domestic violence and organizations providing essential services in the COVID-19 environment. In times of limited resources, we realize that the city council must make difficult decisions and balance multiple emerging needs. We appreciate your swift action to move resources directly to our community to address these growing and urgent needs. Thank you for taking this action. And in addition to those comments, the council did receive a written communication for this evening. However, it was on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda, so we will be unable to read that into the record. And that concludes oral communications or written communications. Apologies.
That's great. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a report from our city manager. And Mr. Miyake, may I ask that you comment on the consent calendar item C and J, please?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. With that request, I have two matters to report to under the city manager's report. And the item 6C and 6JU is, the first matter I wanted to talk to you about is you have received a number of emails with regarding, regarding these consent items. Both these consent items relate to the replacement of Seattle City Light's transmission towers located on 124th Avenue Northeast. Bringing this matter before you to clear any misunderstandings with the purpose of the polls are for, as well as to provide background information about the project itself. But joining us this evening is Ron Kessick, our Assistant Transportation Director, to provide the council with a brief report and to answer any questions the council may have. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Seattle City Light owns an easement along the 124th corridor throughout the city of Bellevue. In the area that we are looking at tonight, between Bellred Road and Northup Way, the easement is about 75 feet either side of the center line of the existing roadway. That easement actually predates 124th Avenue. And the current roadway and any improvements we make are through a consent agreement that the city of Bellevue has worked out with Seattle City Light. You may recall that the 124th Avenue series of projects, there are three projects between Bellred and Northup Way. One is currently under construction, is a jointly funded project with sound transit in the city of Bellevue, where we actually have to raise the roadway over the existing or the now-existing light rail alignment. There are two phases, one to the north and one to the south of that phase. And in each of those phases, there are lattice towers adjacent to the west side of the roadway. During the construction of our project, we need more room to widen the roadway, to put in the bike facilities and pedestrian facilities, et cetera, that are called for in the project. And the lattice towers are actually physically in the way of doing the improvements on the roadway. So, it isn't a beautification project. It's a project to actually take those lattice towers, narrow the footprint of them by putting in monopoles. So, if you picture the lattice towers, they have four legs. Each of those legs are 25 feet apart. So, essentially, you're looking at a 25 by 25 square of encountered physical space. We're going to put in a lattice, or excuse me, a monopole in each of those two locations and seven lattice towers to give us the space necessary to widen the roadway and to build the pedestrian and bike facilities necessary for the projects. These corridor projects have been on the books for a long time. They're part of the Bellred Plan. They haven't been approved by Washington State Department of Transportation and the U.S. Department of Transportation and are part of our TIFI alone. And this work will be funded through the TIFI alone. This is actually the second bid for this project. At staff recommendation, council rejected the initial bid, the previous bid. We had a single bidder who did not meet the qualifications for this type of work that were established by Seattle City Light. Tonight's award of this contract enables us to try and keep on the schedule to meet a power outage that is scheduled regionally through Bonneville Power to drop the power to these transmission lines to enable us to switch over from lattice towers to the monopoles. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Miyake, may I just interject here to let the council comment or question? I'm going to follow this order. Councilmember Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilmember Stokes, Councilmember Lee, Councilmembers On, and then myself. So, starting with Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director or Assistant Deputy Director Kessick for the update. I think you covered a lot of what I, what we've been hearing from the public. When we usually have a road project and there's utilities in the way, we require the utility providers to move them at their cost. And that is because we typically have a franchise agreement with the utilities like PSE that says that if we want to expand the road, that they have to move it at their cost. So, can you explain why that is not the case here and why the city is bearing the cost of this?
Certainly. You're exactly correct. Under a typical franchise agreement, the language of that agreement includes language that requires the franchise utility to relocate at their expense in order to get out of the way of our project. In this case, the easement, Seattle City Light's easement pre-exists our roadway and our roadway actually exists under consent from Seattle City Light. So, in some respects, you're looking at a franchise agreement backwards where we are there essentially by the permission of Seattle City Light and have to meet the conditions of that permission, which has us paying for the relocation of any facilities that they had that pre-existed our roadway.
Great, because they were here first. And if we want, and basically, our road is going on their utility corridor rather than their utility corridor going on our road, right?
That's it. That's it, exactly.
Okay. That was all. I just wanted to make sure we added that clarification because there's lots of people that might not understand that nuance. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Good question. Councilmember Barksdale, comment or question?
No further comment or question. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
A comment or question?
Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add to it and appreciate the information and explanation of this and make it clear, this has become before council for a long time. The plans have been, as pointed out, for a long time. And I, it's just unfortunate that misinformation gets put out and people get concerned and write in or, you know, rightfully want to know what's going on. And so, I'm glad we got that cleared up. And I do hope and would ask that when any individual has a question about something like this, that they actually follow through and talk about it and get the information first before making, you know, assumptions that mislead people. And we'll always be glad to go over it and give them the same information we get tonight. So, I appreciate this information. I'm ready to go forward on it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lee, do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the question raised and concerns people are asking because, especially in terms of COVID-19, you know, the economic concern that we are going to be faced, even without that, this thing we still should know. But I believe that the answer is very clear. I appreciate the staff bringing this up. It probably should have been presented earlier. I don't know. Maybe we don't anticipate all the questions. And I appreciate Councilmember Robertson clarifying that point. So, I think the answer is very clear and I'm satisfied with it. And this is something that we have to do. Thank you.
Councilmembers On.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for providing that clarification. I think that having this open and transparency is really important. And your electrical infrastructure is a specialty. And so, the fact that we only got one bid means that we have to move things forward and get this done. I appreciate the fact that we're working in partnership with Seattle City Light so that their infrastructure continues to provide service on 124th and we're able to make the roadway improvements that are essential for this area in the Spring District. So, I'm ready to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, Ron, when did, when did this come before the council? Because I remember having this discussion, this feels like three years ago, but I might be wrong.
Wow. It has, we've been before council several times on this, maybe not specifically related to the transmission towers, but it has been part of the project for, well, 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 before we went, we pursued the TIFI alone. It was, it was part of the stated objective of the TIFI alone when we applied for that. So, we knew at that time, even though we hadn't progressed the design to the state that it's at today, we knew that we were going to have to replace the towers and able to widen our roadway.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so, I will go ahead and ask the city manager to continue with his report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item left, and this matter is related to identity theft. Specifically, I wanted to say a few words about identity theft as it relates to Washington State's recent unemployment programs. And I bring this up because here at the city of Bellevue, we have seen several of our council members, as well as our employees, targeted by this type of fraud. This is where someone applies for unemployment benefits in someone else's name and the imposter attempts to collect money. I wanted to alert the public that especially during this time, to please be vigilant about checking your accounts for signs of fraudulent activity, change your passwords frequently and be watchful of scams trying to coerce you into giving up money or personal information. More information about unemployment-related scams can be found at the Washington Department of Employment Security website. And other identity theft resources can be found on the Federal Trade Commission identity website. The addresses for both these websites can be found on the city's website. So, this concludes my reports for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will just remind everybody to check the city of Bellevue website daily. It's updated daily with information on COVID-related data and resources available, as well as the information that the city manager just provided. So, we are now to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it passes. And next, we have a study session item, overview of the city's finances related to COVID. And this is for information only, but we'll have an opportunity to all speak to it and ask questions after. So, Mr. Miyake?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, we've intended to provide the council with an update on COVID's impact on our city's finances. And as council is aware, the COVID event has unfolded very quickly and forecasting the financial impacts of COVID has been very difficult, to say the least, primarily because the event itself isn't like anything we've experienced in our careers. And there continues to be so much uncertainty about the virus and its impacts. Given what we know today, we are forecasting a $28 million or 13% revenue loss in our general fund. But having said that, it is likely that it's going to change and that would be dependent upon the future actions of government, as well as how long it may take to find a vaccine. In response to this very, this predicted general fund deficit, we are using rainy day reserves and have aggressively tightened the belt on all our spending. And as we prepare to move into the 2122 BNO budget, we'll also need to continue ramping back our spending in order to balance the budget. One of our goals, having said that, one of our goals in developing the 2122 budget will be to try to avoid staff furloughs if we can. And that's a, it's a big if. Tonight's presentation, as you mentioned, is for informational purposes only, so we're not really seeking any council direction. We will be, however, providing updates at future council meetings and at the upcoming council retreat. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tony Carr, Finance Director, and K. Lu, Assistant Finance Director. Tony?
Thank you. Slide, please. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, it's lovely to have us back this evening and in this very virtual world. So, thank you for having us here. As City Manager Miyake mentioned, this is information only. And we do anticipate this being a first presentation and we do envision coming back in front of you as we continue to learn more information. Slide, please. Today, our agenda before you is about fourfold. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about the uncertainty and the uncharted territory in front of us. K. E. is here to spend some time talking about the forecast of sales and business and occupation taxes. Those are the two major revenue streams that are impacted by the events related to COVID-19. We'll jump into the general fund 2020 impact and talk about the actions we're taking to address that 2020 impact. And then finally, we'll do a little preview on some additional work that's underway and some additional work that you'll see in the future. And then we'll talk about next step, next steps. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. So, as City Manager Miyake mentioned, the impacts of COVID-19 on the economy has placed us truly in uncharted territory. You know, I've been in public finance for the better part of 30 years and I have not seen the economy shut down and then restart. So, we truly are in a space where we have some unknowns. With the Governor's proclamation and the ensuing four-phase reopening of the economy, what you will see tonight is our best estimates of where we are today. We have had to make assumptions on how businesses will come back and, most importantly, about how our consumers are going to return to the marketplace. As we thought about those assumptions, we based them on the experience we saw coming out of China as they started to reopen their economy and how it impacted there. We have been talking to our neighbors and other jurisdictions. And then we also have a service called IHS Global Insight that has been very instrumental in helping us see all the ways in which restarting, restarting this economy can happen. In summary, the impact you will see tonight are swift and truly substantial on our major revenue streams, really focusing on two of them, the sales and the BNO tax. And with that, I will turn it over to K. Lu, the Assistant Director of Finance and Asset Management, to take you through that sales and business and occupation tax impacts. K.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers and City Manager. Thank you for having us here this evening. As Tony said, the economic impact caused by COVID-19-related events are projected to be substantial. In terms of city's revenue, sales and BNO are the two most economically volatile revenue streams that we have. Overall, our best estimate today is we will lose up to 31 million or roughly 24% in these two taxes in 2020. One thing to keep in mind is that council policy splits these two taxes approximately 75% to general fund, 25% to CIP. So, when these two revenue decline, the impacts are on both funds. The total sales and The total sales and BNO revenue impact is about thirty-one million that you see on the slide. They split roughly twenty-three million in general fund and eight million in CIP. You will also see the impact estimation on both funds respectively in the next two slides as we go through sales and BNO in more details. As a reference, during the Great Recession, we lost roughly twenty-one percent in sales and BNO tax revenue from two thousand eight to two thousand ten. It was over three years. Most economists are currently projecting the economic damage related to COVID nineteen to be as severe as the Great Recession, but happened quickly in a shorter period of time. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see uh, which sectors made up our sales tax collection in twenty-nineteen. Of the six large categories, dining accommodation, retail, auto sales and construction are all highly impacted by COVID nineteen. Combined together, they make up about seventy-five percent of our total sales tax pie. For dining and accommodation and retail, the transaction started to decline in the beginning of March when the social distancing first started. Online sales were able to continue, but stores were mostly closed in April and May. Currently, retail stores are now starting curbside pickup services. And according to governor's reopen plan, restaurants will reopen with strict capacity and social distancing measures in the next two phases. Uh, construction and auto sales, they were also largely shut down except essential public projects in April. Now, construction is gradually opening up for low-risk construction on existing facilities with a plan on social distancing and employee monitoring. Auto sales is also allowed to reopen. We will get our May sales tax in July. By then, we will be able to see how much has auto sales picked up in May. Service industry and other miscellaneous industries you see on this pie makes up about twenty-five percent of the pie. And they're relatively less impacted just because many businesses in this category such as IT services, financial services and uh, admin services, they have the availability, the ability to provide service remotely. And you can, you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, the total revenue loss estimation on general fund is about twenty-one million. And on general fund, it's about sixteen million and on CIP is about five million as of today. But as Tony said, we will update the estimates as we have more data and information available to us. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see by industry composition of our BNO tax in a bar chart. BNO usually moves similar to sales tax, but as you can see on the bar, um, service industry has a larger base or share in the total BNO tax. They account for about forty-eight percent. So the impact estimated for BNO is similar to sales tax but slightly less in terms of the percentage drop. Um, our goal through these slides that I just walk you through is to provide an overview of the magnitude of COVID nineteen impact on sales and BNO taxes and why the impact is so significant. With that, I will turn it back to Tony to walk you through the overall general fund impact.
Thank you, K. E. Can we please move forward to slide? One more beyond this, please. Thank you very much. So uh, taking into account the work that K. E. just described to you about our two major revenue streams and the fact that they are losing up to twenty-four percent. And on top of that, that revenue split between the general fund and the CIP, what you see in front of you is our pie chart of our five revenue streams that comes into the general fund with the total at the top being that we are anticipating up to a twenty-eight million dollar impact or a thirteen percent uh, drop in revenues in the general fund. That, that impact is made up of two pieces. The first is BNO and sales tax. There's the twenty-three million dollars on the left. On the right-hand side of the screen, you will, will see that all other also has an impact of about five million dollars. So what you see there is more transactional-based revenues. So for instance, um, with our recreation centers closed, we're no longer collecting parks and recreation fees. That would be in that all other category. With fewer automobiles on the roads, we're collecting less uh, motor vehicle fuel tax. That would be in that all other category. So um, there's a collection of them. All add up to about a five million dollar impact. So if you add the five million dollars and the twenty-three, you end up at the twenty-eight million dollars at the top. You will notice there's two pieces of pie that we're not showing a lot of impact to at the moment, both utility tax and property taxes. And what we're seeing right now in both of those categories is they appear to be coming in relatively as expected. So at this moment, what we're saying is they will continue. We're not going to see a large impact in there. But we all kind of truly believe that if the closure continues on for a while longer and some of the more temporary job losses turn into more permanent job losses, I, I think those two pieces of the pie will need to be reevaluated at that point in time. Uh, so up to twenty-eight million dollars. Let's talk a little bit about how the city is working to address that twenty-eight million dollar gap in twenty-twenty. Next slide, please. The city, because it's a twenty-eight million dollar gap at thirteen percent, the city is taking action now. It's a truly important thing that we do. We're still early, not truly early in the year, but we're still only in the May timeframe. We still have time to take action. So our first, uh, our first piece is to talk about using that rainy day reserve or we just have this slide calling it as reserves. Um, the general fund policy by council policy is that we will maintain a reserve in the general fund at fifteen percent. We currently have a reserve at about twenty-two percent. If you remember back from our mid-biennium conversations, that seems eons ago now that it's, we've been in this for the last several weeks. At the time, we said we need to continue to build our reserves because we know that in the out years, we saw a problem coming and that expenditures were going to outstrip revenues. And we needed to build reserves to provide us time to be thoughtful about how to address that issue. We've now brought that forward and said, we now need to be able to use those reserves now in order to help combat this very drastic COVID unprecedented event. So that's about seven percent or fifteen million dollars of that twenty-eight million. As City Manager Miyaki also mentioned, we have tightened our belt. We are looking under rocks and places for chains in the, in the seat cushions. So we've eliminated all non-travel and training. So obviously, we still have legal folks and engineers who need to make sure their certifications and their licenses are up to date. But outside of that, we've eliminated the other remaining non-necessary travel and training. We're holding our vacancies open, which does of course put pressure on us, but it's the right thing to do. Hold our vacancies open. We're reviewing our consultant contracts. And we're finding that there's some places within our budgets where social distancing has just reduced the need to spend some of our, our contracts. So for instance, maybe the scope of work required a large public meeting. Or maybe the scope of work required some sort of event that required people to be closer than that six-foot social distancing. And we're finding savings there as well. We do have a few more things on the horizon that we're still working on. Uh, we are reviewing several additional options. Uh, the first is CARES package. CARES uh, 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 funding from the federal government. Uh, that package passed a while back, but probably ten days ago now, it came out with new guidance that said that if we have a position that has been substantially converted to responding to COVID, we can claim those payroll and health benefit costs. So we're going back in time to find all the positions at the city that had been working on COVID-related issues. So again, there's a, as a pot of dollars there that will help us in the CARES funding. Of course, we're always looking at additional fund balance options, including potentially thinking about that fifteen percent general fund uh, council policy. But that would obviously be a council decision. Um, lastly, we are, as you know, in very challenging times. The city is working hard to avoid any workforce impacts such as furloughs. Yet with the rate of revenue loss at the moment, we're not sure that's attainable. The city continues to actively engage and find ways to bridge the large gap of twenty-eight million dollars. I was asked a question earlier today about things that we did in the Great Recession that might be applicable today. So a, a couple of quick answers to that question. Um, in addition to doing some substantial program changes that reduced staffing for some programs, um, we also did things like outsourcing programs where we found that it was better, more efficient, um, cheaper for us to outsource something versus have our staff do it themselves. Uh, we did quite a bit of work in reducing our fleet maintenance and replacement costs. Uh, we did actually implement a new revenue back in the Great Recession and that was the basic life support revenue. Um, and then we also transferred some programs to places where they were most appropriately done. So a variety of things happened back there. And I think those are all things that we would continue to look at as we move forward uh, into this next phase. Next slide, please. So a little primer of some additional work that's underway. As City Manager Miyaki mentioned, our twenty-one, twenty-two general fund budget will also see an impact. So the COVID-related impacts are not just going to happen in twenty-twenty. They will continue for a period of time. I can tell you that forecasting a recession is challenging under any circumstance. Uh, yet this one is really based on the behaviors associated with the pandemic. It makes it even more unpredictable. If you read the newspapers and some of the economic things you will find out there, there are folks who think we might have something called a V-shaped recession, which is where it goes straight down and then goes straight up very quickly. I think the longer uh, closures continue, the less optimistic I would be thinking that a V might happen. There's the U-shaped recession where you go down fast and kind of bottom out for a flat period of time and then come back up. And then there's a W, which by the looks of it would go down and up and down and up. And I'm sure there's other letters that we could find that would support uh, thinking about how an unpredictable uh, recession might look. We have done a series of planning scenarios. We base those on national and local economic data and really thinking about how we might see the economy rebuild. Um, and at our current cost levels, our current early look indicates that we will have another twelve-plus million dollar reduction in revenues in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So that means we're either going to be reducing expenditures or raising revenues as we head into next year's budget discussions. Uh, turning on to the CIP, this work is still under development, but there are a few points that I'd like to make sure I, I mentioned with you this evening. First of all, sales and BNO. Remember from the earlier time, thirty-one million dollars, twenty-three of it's in the general fund. You'll find eight million dollars, eight million dollars of that twenty-twenty impact in the CIP. We believe that real estate excise tax is something that we should be looking at and probably seeing a decrease in as well. We're still working on trying to develop what that scenario might look like. But I would guess that there's a couple of positives that I would put on the table regarding the CIP, which you know, is the work that the current infrastructure uh, work that's happening out in our community, uh, the work that transportation's out there doing building roads and utilities. Uh, that is really truly helping with an economy stimulus. So it's providing jobs. It's starting to move where we can as a city step in and help with that economic recovery. Um, next bullet, please. Next slide, please. So that brings us to next steps. Um, I can guarantee you that our, our folks in the Budget Office and in the Economic Analysis Team in Finance and Asset Management will continue to watch, listen and update. We are in constant contact with our neighboring jurisdictions as well as with all departments across the city. So we truly can get a good understanding of how we're being impacted. Uh, we do get data fairly regularly regarding um, the impacts of COVID. The hardest part is the two-month lag between when we have a month that happens and then we don't get that sales tax for two months. So it is something we're still working through. And I anticipate that we'll be returning back to council at a near-term budget workshop. And I appreciate your time this evening. Um, and with that, I will turn this back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I like to think that we're going to have a J-shaped recession where we go down, but we come back higher than we started. So that's, that's what I'm gaven for. Um, we'll go ahead, uh, give everybody a chance to have uh, questions or comments. And if we need to go around a couple of times, I'm happy to do that. We're going to start with Councilmembers on, then Lee Stokes, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Robertson, and then me. So Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, Tony, I can only imagine trying to forecast revenues uh, during the uncertainty of COVID where we're still learning more about the virus itself, both the severity, the duration, how it um, spreads and what kind of effect it has on the health of our community. So I appreciate the work you're doing, uh, trying to deal with the squishiness of of an imprecise information to try to do a forecast. Um, I did have a couple of questions because uh, when I think about the forecast of the of the revenues, some of the questions I have are around the uh, you talked about the CARES Act and the funding from um, the federal government. There's also been some money that's been released from the state and the governor to Bellevue. And then I understand that King County is recently also released some monies to Bellevue. There's also a fourth uh, package at the federal level, the HEROES Act that may be uh, moving over to the Senate for discussion. So I think there's a lot of moving parts in terms of what kind of relief and funding we might even get from um, other places. So I wondered if you can comment on that.
Certainly, I can, I can hum a few bars there. Um, uh, yes, we have seen so many come in from a variety of sources. It all has different um, restrictions and requirements attached to how it can be spent. So there are like all, uh, if you view it as a kind of a grant application process, each grant application has a different set of requirements. Uh, we have on tap to receive money from the state to the tune of about four-point-three million dollars. That money can be spent primarily against uh, supporting some of our costs that we've incurred at the city. And that is actually the funding that they opened up to allow us to also cover costs um, uh, for positions that though have already been budgeted, that we can um, recover those costs if that position has been substantially converted to, to having to respond to COVID nineteen. Um, there's a, a variety of other things that money can also be used for. So we are tracking all of the different pieces that come in. The piece from King County that I just heard about recently, I believe that has more to do with small businesses. I could do some more research into that though. Um, but yes, it's quite a myriad collection of funding sources. And each one we look at and make sure that we use it to the highest and best use.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that that funding is going to pay for the additional cost we are incurring because of COVID and not necessarily going to be very hopeful for the revenue shortfalls that we're seeing from BNO and sales tax.
True statement. I do think a small portion of it could help us. Um, and by small, I mean the costs that for people that are existing that are already budgeted in our, in our facilities uh, that have been transferred to basically being COVID. So there's a small piece of payroll that I think it could cover, but substantially it is for new costs. That is a true statement.
Okay. And then when you talked about vacancies, um, leaving them open, I do want to make sure that if we have vacancies in fire and police, they are such a um, essential function for the city that um, we, we should talk about whether we actually leave those vacancies unfilled or not.
Okay. I will make a note of that.
Okay. Take my three minutes are probably up, so I'll wait for the next round.
Am I on? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, Councilmember Lee.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Great presentation. Uh, I think that's very important in light of uh, the econo- economics that's uncertain. Uh, I commend you on, uh, you know, fighting that background. And so it's the best guess we can make. But I want to compliment, uh, compliment that the city has always done very well in the past. So we have to create this uh, staff to manage it. Uh, my question is, uh, do we have different scenarios? You know, you mentioned what's the might, might, most likely, maybe you think this may be. Sometimes when you deal with uncertainty, you want to provide the worst and the best. Uh, you think that's something to consider? You know, that's one question.
Yes, Councilmember Lee, we have been working on a series of scenarios. The one we brought you today on the planning scenario for especially twenty-one, twenty-two, that's kind of our best guess forward today. Um, on the twenty-eight million dollar up to general fund number, uh, we've taken a long look at that. And we think that is at least within uh, a reasonable, a regional, a reasonable place. I can do scenarios that are definitely in worse shape and I can do them in better shape. So um, we do have a series of scenarios. If that is of interest to you, we certainly can provide you that information. Mr. Lee? Councilmember Lee, are you there?
Councilmember Lee? We may be having some technical difficulties. I've also lost contact with the mayor. If everyone could hold tight.
Okay, I'm here. I was talking to myself. Sorry. Um, is Councilmember Lee there? What I was trying to say is we're going to go back around, and if Councilmember Lee has more to say, he will have another opportunity if we can't hear from him right now. So moving on to Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, we can spend more time rehashing than actually listening to the thing. I, I, it's a great presentation. I know we moved forward on this. Uh, we've gone through the recession before, and you've laid this out very well, and obviously we're going to take a look at different options as we go along. Uh, and it was important to, um, I think next, you know, always remember that the fo- federal or state money coming in uh usually has strings, and it's not necessarily just replacing what we're losing. Uh, but it's good to know we have some of that, and we're working as hard as we can to get more of that uh to help us. Because if we get these extra funds on things that are needed in the community, we don't have to pay for it. So that's, that's a benefit. Um, I do want to say that is is a overall policy. What I I'm hoping we're doing is us being, we're obviously trying to be fiscally responsible, but I also think we have to uh keep in mind, we're looking forward to coming out of this. We know we're going to come out of it. And when we come out, we want to come out in the best way possible. We wanted, don't want to panic and take actions that may uh we look back and say, well, wish we hadn't done it, wish we had tightened the belt here as opposed to here, or that we look at the, the reserves, and we keep uh because this city is going to recover, and it's going to be a lot of work to do on that. And we need to have uh the staff and the city working at its highest level as we can. So it's a big balance, and I, I think uh we're fortunate to have a, a financial team who can and the staffing to help us get there. And I hope the council will keep in mind that we want to come out of this in a way that we can continue to move forward, and we have a lot of support from businesses and from the community uh that a lot of cities don't have. So uh let's keep working on the balance and keep having this discussion and always keep in mind that uh this is a short-term thing. The long run, we want to continue to do the things that we want to do in Bellevue and to make it a better place. Um, so I, I feel very comfortable with the way we're going so far and want to uh us to keep that balance and keep a positive a- attitude about this going forward uh and make hard decisions when we need to. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the uh continuing conversations on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, Tony, thanks for the presentation, albeit uh sobering. Um, still, I would echo Councilmember Stokes there. I, you know, I have, I have a sense of uh uh, uh, of relief almost, knowing that we have such a strong uh financial team that is uh uh helping us and guiding us through this uh very challenging uh times. And um I like the mayor's uh um thought there about a J, not a V, but a J, and probably enough council members here on the, on this body that uh would like a J-shaped uh uh return back to our strong economy. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, so first, uh, and, and thank you for answering my questions about what we did um in two thousand eight through two thousand ten. I appreciate that um from our earlier discussion today. Um, so we did dip below the fifteen percent of reserves last time around. How far di- fa- how far of a dip did we take? And what, if any, were the ramifications to that? And how quickly will we be able to get back to that fifteen percent?
Uh, so I can answer part of that question. I might have to do some research for a different part of it.
Okay.
But we did dip down to about ten percent in twenty-ten on our general fund reserves. At the time, we also had compensating reserves in our existing left one reserve that also counted as part of our general fund package at the time. As for how long it took for us to get back to fifteen percent, so I joined the city in twenty-eleven. I think we might have been back up by twenty thirteen or fourteen. I'd have to go back and pull the data for sure, but it's somewhere in that space.
Okay.
May, it might have been twenty-fifteen, so it's someplace in that space.
Okay, great.
I just want to compare that for you.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I, I would like to see that uh, that data. And then you mentioned um a- additional actions or perhaps even um, and I think everybody would, would hate to see furloughs um at, at, at the city, but what, what are some of the core metrics that you're looking at in order to um, you know, make that decision or, 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 you know, have a serious conversation about that? And, and maybe not just as it relates to furloughs, but as it relates to taking even more severe action. What are some of the core metrics you're looking at there?
Sure, um, absolutely. So I think one of the challenges we face um as how our tax structures work is that for our major tax structure, which is sales tax, that's by far and away our largest one.
Okay.
Uh, the March data just came out the first week of May for the total number, and we don't get the split of how the, the stratification of that sales tax until the third week of May. So as we think about the lag time it takes for us to get true data, so getting, I think, taking a look at what that April data looks like, looking at what the May data looks like, so that we really have a firmer understanding, is that up to twenty-eight million dollars the right number? Because in the end, that's the gap we're trying to close for. So for the immediate, for the immediate need of trying to think about that, it's trying to make sure we have really done the right job forecasting the number, and then also ensuring that we have really done our best to find all the different ways that we can help fill that gap. So I think those are the kind of the two big things that drive into that conversation. And um I think that's the data that we use to think about that conversation
Okay.
before we get there.
And then I would assume you'd be updating the, the council shortly after that time, once you've received that data?
I, yes, we certainly can do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Tony, thanks for all the work that you and your staff are doing. Um, as mentioned previously, this is uh a tough time to, you know, manage the finances of the city and, and also just given that we also have the community to take care of as well. Um, you know, through the human services support as well. So just all around kudos to you all for being able to pull all of this off um as you have. Just one quick question in terms of furloughs, and I hope as mentioned, uh, that it doesn't come to that, but just curious about what that would look like in terms of, you know, would we will we still be able to provide, you know, insurance and, and some level of benefits? You know, do we have any thoughts around what kind of support we can still provide to employees that may end up
Sure.
getting furloughed?
Sure, that's a great question and one that I'm, I, I really don't think I have the data in front of me to be able to answer that for you. Um, if we uh start thinking more seriously about that space, um, that is something that I'll work with City Manager Miyaki on uh to ensure, but our, our highest priority, of course, is our employees. And because that is what makes the delivery of the service happen in the city. So um I would certainly hope for, but I certainly cannot answer the question at hand, but I can certainly do some research to find an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, so uh, yeah, this is a sobering um presentation, and I guess the good news is if we think it's only going to last till the end of twenty-twenty-one, that's much, much shorter than the recession that started in two thousand seven and was painful for a long, long period of time. But um, it's very abrupt, and a lot of people are hurting. And I, I'm personally very concerned about the people who are out of work and the businesses that are going under. Um, so I'd, I hope that our Economic Development Department is working to come up with strategies to make it easier for businesses to start, businesses to reopen um as well as for development as planned to go forward. I know that we have an agenda item on later tonight that will hopefully continue to start more development or keep development going. Um, but will we get an update sometime in the next month or so about any additional economic development? Um, ac- action to kickstart, make sure that everyone knows Bellevue's open for business. We want to turn this um downturn into an up.
Um, Councilmember Robertson, I, I don't know the upcoming council calendar, but I certainly can connect up with the Director Cummins on that and with the city clerk and um and ensure that that information is available.
Councilmember Robertson, this is Brad Miyaki, and um we are working pretty aggressively, both, both the Chamber and BDA in terms of making sure when that time comes, when we're coming out of the recession, that Bellevue is very visibly opened up for business, and we'll be doing pretty aggressive marketing in which to make that happen.
Great, that's good, good to hear. Um, what are we doing, if anything, to advocate with the governor's office to make sure that our businesses can get open and start doing business? Because I think we are the behind every other state in the United States based on some things I saw online in terms of the opening schedule. Um, yet we were the first to start having cases, so we should really be ahead of them. So is the city taking a position to try to get the reopening and make the reopening happen in a way that's safe? Or we, how, what are we doing?
Mayor, if you, you'd like, I could answer that question in terms of, we have um the mayor and Deputy Mayor, and I have met with the governor's office to inquire about that and to express concerns about, you know, opening up um some of the lines of business in a measured way. And so that's been our message to them. And Mayor and Deputy Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to also comment on, on the um Councilmember Robertson's question?
Well, I will say this, you're advocating every day for the safest, most rapid reopening possible, and I think the governor has laid it out very clearly that if we uh keep following directions and we keep the spread at bay, that we can get through these stages sooner than later. And um, you know, the best-case scenario is we get through each stage in two to four weeks, and uh the worst case is we get out there ahead of it ear- too early, and then we have a spike in in um more cases and more deaths. So I'm optimistic that we are a community that follows the rules and that we will get through this faster, and we will be opening faster and, and for the long run. Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments?
Um, well, I will say that um if we look at the um, the success of other states that have reopened their their economies much more aggressively than we have, if you look at Georgia, if you look at Florida, um, they saw a continued decline um in the number of cases uh despite uh businesses uh reopening. So um, if that's any indicator, that uh that bodes well for uh for Washington State. Personally, I'd like to see us, um, and I think Councilmember Robertson shares, I would like to see us speed that up a little bit, especially for those businesses or industry where there's very little um contact um with, with, with other uh i- individuals. Um, but um, yeah, the last thing that we want, um, Mayor, for sure, is to, you know, to to, to go down a path where we start seeing uh more cases again.
Okay.
We're all going to look up Georgia's numbers when we get home here.
But uh, Councilmember Robertson, one thing I forgot to add is um I want to say during the um where the construction was opened up, the first phase of construction, um, I want to mention that our staff were actively involved in conversations on how that could happen. So that's another way we've been involved in um opening up business.
Good, thanks very much. And I know that this is going to be a difficult situation. I've been through this before in the last recession. I really appreciate Councilmember Zahn's comments about making sure that we try to keep our public safety um departments fully, fully uh staffed. I share that. Um, and because if we don't have safety, we don't have anything. So um I'll yield my time, and uh, thank you very much, Tony, for the update.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Um, so I have a question that may be obvious to other people, but it's not to me. I'm curious about sales taxes and the difference uh between what Bellevue receives in our percentage of sales taxes between onsite stores and internet shopping. Can you answer that?
Oh, golly, um, I'm probably going to have to see if Katie Lou's got some data in the back of her, in her mind here. Uh, we still substantially, in Bellevue at least, we still substantially have a at least before COVID, so when the economy was open back in February. Um, we had a great deal more um uh brick-and-mortar shopping than we had online sales, but online sales was growing quite rapidly at the time. Katie, do you have any data that you could provide?
Yeah, uh, if I remember correctly, approximately, I can only talk about approximately. Uh, online sales was about ten percent of our uh total sales tax collection. And but that percentage has been growing quite uh uh fast uh in the past couple of years. Um, it grows uh faster than the average sales tax growth of about five to six percent. It grows at about, you know, uh, six to uh nine percent. Uh, and since tw- uh twenty-eighteen, uh, the marketplace sales tax started, we did see a uh huge jump in online sales uh tax collection. Uh, since then, it has been increasing quite uh fast, too.
So thank you. So my question is, if I spend ten dollars online versus ten dollars at a brick-and-mortar store, does Bellevue get this, collect the same amount of sales tax from my purchase as a Bellevue resident?
Yes, as long as it's delivered in Bellevue. Sorry, Tony.
No, no. As long as it's what?
Delivered in Bellevue.
So, okay, okay, that's good. So it's like, okay, so the message is just everybody go shopping. It doesn't matter how you do it, just go shopping. That'll help the city. Okay, um, I did get a report back from Honda of Bellevue Autos that said that their May sales are currently five times more than they were in April, which is the good news. But the bad news is that's only fifty percent of what they were last year, this time last year. So um hopefully, the last third of the month will steadily improve for them and move on from there. Okay, I'm going to go back through uh the order, starting with Councilmembers on, then Lee, Stokes, Noonhouse, Barksdale, Robertson. In case somebody wants to ask another question or have another comment, and you don't have to, but we'll start with Councilmembers on.
Uh, yes, thank you. You know, funnily enough, um, at the Sound City Association last week, uh, the city of Sammamish said that they saw a sales tax increase in their city because of the online sales. So we'll have to watch what happens in Bellevue. Um, the other one that we were talking about in terms of really restarting the economy and having a restart plan for Bellevue. Um, I will say, having been in the construction management part for the ports, uh, we have actually had uh non-stop construction during this whole time. Um, and just seeing how the industry does adjust to the social distancing and the, the hygiene, the sanitation um to keep going. I have every belief that as we reopen phases of business, that actually the construction industry um has some really good tools that having continued could be used for other industries. Um, I did have a question, though, about um supporting the, the business side as they reopen. Um, so some of the social distancing for restaurants, have we thought about opening up some right away so that some of the tables and chairs could be outside to continue to allow as many um patrons as possible? Um, helping with um wash stations and sanitizing uh face covering so that as they reopen, those are the kind of things we've seen in the construction part, that the supply and the availability of this is what can be a, a barrier. So is that something Bellevue might help with?
Uh, Councilmember Zahn, this is Tony. I certainly can look into it.
Okay, I think that would be um really helpful. And then the other one is, um, I know you talked about um some of the CARES funding, but I also know that FEMA has um the, the state FEMA coordinator in terms of looking at reimbursement from FEMA for COVID. So is that something that the city has also looked at?
Yes, uh, we are looking at the deadlines for all of the, the, the different buckets of money between CARES and FEMA. Um, and so, yes, we are, we are looking at all those, all those options for funding to ensure that we are able to recollect um the costs that we are incurring.
Yeah, because those are FEMA reimbursements, and it seems, and my understanding is that they've got um the rules about what is a reimbursable and how to document that. So thank you for that. And then on the furlough, my question was, um- And then on the furlough, my question was, are we pursuing redeploying our staff that maybe, you know, in parks and rec where right now those programs are canceled into retraining for other positions so that as many of our folks can still remain employed as possible?
Yes, in fact, it's my understanding that in the Parks Arena, there were, I think, 51 individuals who were full-time employees. And it's my understanding that they've all been reallocated to different areas, including helping staff the D E O C and helping with economic development. So, we have worked hard, human resources has worked hard with the Parks Department on that front.
Okay.
Councilmembers on, I'm going to stop you there. We need to go back around to hear you more, or can we?
Maybe not. I'll listen to the rest of the council members. If their comments reflect some of my thoughts, then I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee. I'm not hearing Councilmember Lee, so I will come back to him. Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you. You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're asking a lot of good questions on this. There's the hundred of them we could ask. I do want to say, I think it's very positive for the city to work with the state and work with businesses and work with individuals and the hospitals and the care providers and the whole spectrum on our perception of, and it's our perception, of what is the best way to get back to more normal. And there's a lot of discussion going on outside of council meetings and a lot of us, even with our friends or, you know, there are a lot of opinions. I would say that I think, and think we're fortunate to have a state and government that is, and the legislature that's actually moved forward and I think done a very good job under the circumstances. Nobody's perfect. I would hope that we don't get bogged down in in a more political view of this. There are states that have done things differently and there are clearly states that are already beginning to have a rebound. It's a, it's a very difficult situation and I think our energy needs to be put on trying to work in a positive way to get things back to normal and working with the, with the community and working with businesses. And a lot of businesses really don't want to take the risk either of having us mess it up and then have a resurgence and that. And the unfortunate thing come back on us that we, as this happened in a number of states who did not follow a more rigorous program and, and countries who didn't do that. So, it's not an either or. I think it's us all trying to work together and be respectful, but at the same time, try to work on what's best for us, but let's don't get all anxious to open things up in a way that we end up looking back in several months and saying, you know, that wasn't the way to do it. So, let's, let's just kind of focus on what we can do in Bellevue and how we can do working with our community on getting going. And I think that's the best thing. I think we're doing a great job of it. I just want to make sure we don't get caught up because it's so easy to get caught up in the, the other aspect of, you know, who's right and who's doing the right thing and who's, what should we do and look what somebody else is doing. And I think we're very fortunate to be in the position we're in, which is actually pretty darn good and in, under the circumstances. I don't have any other questions. There are dozens of questions, but I think we're in a really good path on this with the city. And let's keep it on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think Councilmember Stokes is absolutely right. We, you know, every state, every city is unique. And just because Florida and Georgia have seen success reopening their, their, their economy and have seen the average number of new daily cases in Florida, for example, declined by 14% and Georgia declined by 12%, that's no guarantee that that we would have the same results. He's absolutely right. I think it's a very state-by-state perspective and every, everyone is different with different set of circumstances. Having said that, you know, I believe fully that Bellevue will make a roaring comeback as soon as the economy is opened up again with the number of huge employers here. Just the mindset of our residents that want to get back to work, that want to start earning again, that want to provide for their families. I mean, this is just such a, a unique city that has so many positive attributes and such a positive outlook that we will get past this and we got past it and back in 2008 to 2010 and we'll get past it again. In fact, we'll do it in a much quicker fashion than we did that during the, during the Great Recession. So, so, you know, I look forward to further guidance from, from, you know, the governor's office. And, you know, I know, you know, that the mayor and I will continue to push as much as we can for, for additional guidance and, and look to how we implement that guidance here at the, at the city. But I have no doubt that we will return and return in, in, in a big way. So, Tony, thanks again for the presentation and look forward to further updates in the near future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Berksdale.
Thank you. So, just one clarifying question in terms of the budget workshop. I know we had the annual survey that goes out. What inputs do we have into the budget workshop?
We usually, historically, I brought you a series of inputs. We do bring you the, the survey results, usually at a budget workshop, like you just noted. But we'll also bring forward an updated forecast information. We'll have more information related to the impacts that we're seeing in COVID. We'll, we'll bring forward anything else, any policy discussions that would usually be held. Is there something specific you would like to see at the budget workshop?
I guess, just curious about what we can get to inform it, you know, given the current situation? Because I don't know exactly when the annual survey went out, but if there, if it was before COVID and whether that's going to reflect the state of the city right now, the community. And so, just thinking about what other inputs we might be able to feed into that process.
Certainly, sir. We can take that into consideration and make sure we bring forward the right information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Robertson.
I don't have any other questions. I just had a comment. And that is that it might be helpful to present, the next time we have a budget update or at the budget workshop, to have a schedule with a process schedule, hearing dates, usually to three public hearings, et cetera. Because three of our council members have either only been through the budget process once or not at all. And so, getting the rhythm and the sense of how it all works and when it comes together is something that not everyone may have. And it's always helpful for the public. So, I would just recommend that we do that as we start off on the, on the budget process.
We certainly will. Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know that this entire city is chomping at the bit for recovery. And I'm just looking forward to the opportunities that we'll have when we can all get out there and support each other and support our local businesses and, and our restaurants and, and just all that we can do to help our community recover. So, thank you for this very good report and we will now move on to other.
Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just wondering, I was going to check in with Charmaine to see if we might have gotten.
I'm sorry, that's right.
Councilmember Lee back.
Yeah.
Charmaine?
Yeah, so we have had Councilmember Lee. He is on the phone, I believe, with tech support to see. He is just now reconnected, so let's see if it works this time. Councilmember Lee, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can now hear you.
Okay, well, I, I don't know why. I was the one that's got cut off just when I was getting to it.
Councilmember Lee, I'm going to give you an opportunity to finish what you had to say there.
Well, yeah, this is the first kick I have with this topic, which is very important, anyway. I'm frustrated, very frustrated with the system that's working here. Anyway, as I was cut off, I guess, I was emphasizing the need for having scenarios to look at, the worst scenario, more importantly, the worst scenario. Because we need to be prepared for the worst if it happens. We need to know how to respond, how to react. Hopefully, when that happen, we will have the best scenario possible. And so, you know, all this discussion is all good, but we're talking about, you know, a situation that's uncertain. We're talking about not knowing exactly what may be, you know, happening. So, we really cannot realistically, you know, address those issues, but we can't address them, but not, but we need to know the worst, anyway. That's what I'm trying to say is. And the point that I appreciate, the scenario, which is important, is even when we recover, we don't know what it's going to be. You know, people are talking about new economy, the new norm. You know, the things that we think that we can get the tax revenue back may not necessarily be where the revenue is. We talk about e-commerce, right? I mean, brick mortar sales tax or whatever tax we're looking at, e-tax. We need to have some ideas in case what happens. We have to be prepared for them. If it's the same, same old, same old, that's fine. We can have one scenario for that, but if it is not. So, I like to have a scenario, looking at what we may have now or what may happen after the recovery. You know, are we going to lose some businesses? Some businesses will be gone? Are we going to do these things differently? Are we going to use virtual meetings? Are we going to drive as much? Are we going to stay home more? Who knows? Let's figure out. Businesspeople are going to do things that's different. They're going to change it so that they can keep their business up. And we need to know, guess what they are, respond to it. That's one. So, I really like to know that. Second one is, we, I, we're talking about laying people off furloughing. I think that's the last thing we want to do. We want to take care of employee. We don't want that people unemployed. That's the fundamental of econ, economy. People need to be employed. We have the good jobs. So, I think, so, how do we look at some of the tight, belt tightening? I think Tony mentioned a couple of things the last time around. We, we have some temporary employees. Maybe we look at contractors. Maybe we can do a few things that we can have our employee do, or maybe other people do other things. We know that our public safety's got to be number one. We cannot compromise it, but we can do it differently, maybe. So, there are innovative things of doing things, innovative way of doing programs. That's another thing that I wanted to look at is, we basically are talking about what we can do ourselves, but how about our programs? Their programs, maybe we can do differently. Their programs, maybe we can do with different priorities. Maybe different programs we can do sooner rather than later or later rather than sooner. So, I think there needs to be a little bit more scenario building, some conversation, some innovative ideas and thinking. You know, things are no longer the same old as usual. Things are going to be different. So, you're going to change. So, let's build some scenarios. Look at them. What we can do. Talk to businesspeople. You know, what makes sense? I, I would really like to look at a scenario, look at a circumstance, look at a situation. Then we can talk about what choices we have to make, what we can do, how we can do it. Otherwise, you know, we don't really know what to respond. How do I know this is right, what is wrong? If I don't know what condition, what situation we are in, we don't. And all we talk about this has been good, but it's applying to one scenario, not to the second scenario. So, we got to tie them all together. So, I really want, would like to have the staff. I appreciate what they have done. That's the good work. Everything's great. But let's put some scenarios and put some solutions and put some opportunities, put some challenges to each scenario so that we, as a city council and staff, working together and the community, know what to do in case one scenario is the case, one scenario becomes reality. So, that's all I have to say. But I just want to make sure the technology doesn't cut me off, doesn't let me have the opportunity. Because I want to be in together with you, talking together, conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, that's it.
Glad we were able to reconnect and hear what you had to said, say, because that was really great.
But there's no, no, no give and take. That's the problem. You know, I, I'm out there isolated. And when I say something, you, you can't respond to that anymore. But, so it's not as good. But I appreciate that. I appreciate, I put in my two cents worth. And I hope that anybody, you or others, think about anything to respond to me. I appreciate the conversation and dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Okay, moving on to other ordinances, resolutions and motions. We have ordinance 6513. City manager, would you like to introduce that to us, please?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. Proposed ordinance 6513 is an interim official control ordinance, which reduces minimum parking standards in the land use code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service. This particular proposed interim official control ordinance accomplishes a number of objectives. The first one is it responds to the council's adopted affordable housing strategy by lowering costs to build affordable housing. Second, it also responds to the increased affordable housing demands as a result of the COVID. And third, it brings the city's land use code in conformance with the recently amended state requirement that places a maximum ratio that cities can impose for required minimum parking for housing units near frequent transit service. Joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, Director of Development Services, and a couple of his staff, staff joining him, Prisna Tanna's Development Services Consulting and Turning, and Eric England, our senior planner. And they're going to provide the council with a staff report and will be available to answer any questions council has before taking up action on this proposed ordinance in front of you this evening. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and city council members. As Mr. Miyaki described, we're here this evening, Charmaine, you can go to the next slide. We're here this evening seeking council action on ordinance 6513, which is an interim control that would amend the land use code, reducing minimum parking requirements for housing developments. Before we continue with the presentation, I just want to point out and correct a Scrivener's error, Scrivener's error in the proposed ordinance that was published in your agenda materials. The date that is shown at the bottom of page two of the ordinance in your packet is being corrected. It currently reads June 11th, 2010, and is being corrected to read June 11th, 2020. So, just a minor missed button, a little to the left of the two on that one, but that quick correction is for your information. Next slide, please. So, what we want to cover this evening are, first of all, the objectives. Mr. Miyaki mentioned some of them to the IOC and how it responds to city council policy direction. Also, I want to talk about the components of the proposed IOC, what changes are proposed for our codes. When we're talking about reducing the minimum requirement for parking, the effect of an interim official control, how the process works, the effective date. Essentially, we want to remind the council of how that process works and then the development of permanent regulations following tonight, should you take action. And then, direction requested from council, we'll restate that at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. So, the, essentially, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, the, there are several objectives here. I'll touch on quickly since he's mentioned those. But again, to follow the adopted affordable housing strategy the council has put in place to address the cost of parking, which has been identified as a significant barrier to construction of affordable housing. And we've heard that from a number of the developers out there, that it is challenging to advance projects because of the cost, particularly of structured parking in your building. The proposed land use code amendments would align our parking standards with the state requirements that were included in Senate Substitute House Bill 2324, which sets minimum parking standards, and that has an effective date of June 11th, 2020. Also, it improves alignment in our code, in the land use codes for parking levels in frequently, in areas that are frequently served by transit. So, there is some benefit in consistency and alignment of the code that comes with the proposed amendments. And then finally, we have seen projects use what we call the alternative route in defining the parking requirements in their project by doing this project-specific study. And we found that those studies are really showing that the parking demand, because of the level of transit that is provided in the city, is lower than what is provided in. is lower than what is provided in the code. And again, this alternative path allows them, through a study, to reduce parking below the standard that's in the code, but that's a fairly rigorous process to go through. And this would simplify that for a number of projects. So I'm going to turn it over to Trisna Tana, who's going to talk a bit more about the details of the proposed ordinance. Trisna?
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse, council members and city manager Miyaki. I want to provide a little bit more information on the reasons behind this proposed interim official control that Mr. Brennan just touched on. So one of those objectives of the IOC is to implement some of the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Strategy that, as you know, council adopted in twenty-seventeen. This Affordable Housing Strategy recognized the affordable housing crisis happening in Bellevue and this region, and included a list of recommendations to mitigate this crisis, which of course, as Mr. Brennan pointed out, has been made worse by the current COVID-nineteen emergency. The IOC addresses several recommendation, one of which is Policy C five, which is to lower the cost of building affordable housing. Parking, as mentioned earlier, is an expensive piece of residential development. What we have heard from builders and developers is that parking spaces cost anywhere from twenty-five thousand dollars per space to upwards of fifty to sixty thousand or more when they're built underground. So reducing the minimum parking requirement, especially when such parking is not needed, and we'll speak a little bit more towards that in later slides, is a huge cost savings and encourage affordable housing and housing development in general to occur. The interim official control only applies to those developments that are near frequent transit service, which is one quarter of a mile radius from a transit stop with frequent service. It is also intended to implement a policy B one that recommends reducing parking requirements for housing around light rail stations. And we will count light rail stations as eligible as a frequent service stop. The interim official control also aligns with a couple of other city policies. One of its LU one, land use one of the comprehensive plan to direct most of city's growth to the downtown regional growth center and to other areas designated for compact mixed-use development served by a full range of transportation options, as well as with the transportation master plan recommendation to support transit use through design regulations. This is Transit Strategy seven. Next slide, please. So the state legislation that Mike spoke of earlier is another objective of this proposed interim official control to conform the land use code with this recently enacted state legislation. This past legislative session, Substitute House Bill twenty-three forty-three, which is titled Urban Housing Supply, was enacted to apply to cities that plan under the Growth Management Act. And the intent of this legislation is to increase the supply of housing in urban areas by making it more attractive and cost-effective to build housing. One of the sections of this house bill amends RCW thirty-six seventy-eight six-twenty, setting a cap or a ceiling for the minimum parking requirements that cities may impose for certain housing units. Those housing units are those that meet the criteria of frequent transit service. For affordable housing, as this table shows, frequent transit service means within one quarter of a mile of a transit stop with service at least two times per hour for twelve hours in a day. And for market rate multifamily housing and housing for seniors and people with disabilities, the transit stop must have service at least four times per hour for that twelve-hour period. If affordable housing and market rate multifamily housing meets this criteria, the ceiling, this is the cap that the cities can impose as a minimum parking requirement, is one space per bedroom or zero-point-seven-five space per unit. And for housing for seniors and people with disabilities, the ceiling is for parking spaces only for staff and visitors. So Substitute House Bill twenty-three forty-three also has a timing implication for cities such as Bellevue to, which does not have regulations that conform with these caps. The effective date for this bill is June eleven, twenty-twenty. We'll explain later where those inconsistencies in our land use code occurs in later slides. But because this effective date is June eleven, twenty-twenty, it's another reason we're bringing forward this set of land use code amendments as an interim official control, as well as, of course, addition to responding to the affordable housing crisis and trying to implement the Affordable Housing Strategy recommendations. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn over the rest of several of these slides to Eric.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newhouse, council members and city manager Miyaki. What I wanted to do was go over the components of the proposed IOC, which basically follow the format of the state legislation. So if a development comes in and it includes one of four housing types, and it's within a quarter mile of a transit stop with frequent transit service, then the minimum parking standards would apply. Our proposed standard is shown below in the purple. So for affordable housing and market rate, what we're proposing is is a point-seven-five spaces per unit. Again, this is on the minimum side. And for housing for seniors and people with disabilities, essentially, it would keep the same standard S-day, which would be used for employees and visitors. What we wanted to do on the right is kind of show you the cap of what the legislation would allow, which is in that blue table. So like Trisna said, there's options. One would be the point-seven-five spaces per unit, which is what we've shown and kind of highlighted in that red circle. The other option on the other extreme would be to go with one space per bedroom, which kind of follows that format below on the blue. So for the reasons that Mike and Trisna have said, and the reasons we continue to explain further on in this presentation, our proposal are the ones in the purple slide. Next slide, please. So this would really look, this is also what you have for your map in Exhibit A in your packet. And it shows the areas that we believe would be eligible for these new standards. The areas shown in yellow would only apply to those affordable housing units because there's a lower threshold for the transit service. So anywhere inside those yellow, it would only be for affordable housing units to have lower standards. Anywhere in the green would be eligible for all four of those housing types to take advantage of these minimum parking standards. So that is what is proposed with ours. And this map was created by our GIS using transit data, and we're planning to update it annually. And will be available for the public and staff to use as a tool in deciding if they're eligible for these criteria. And lastly, what we'll be doing to make sure that we confirm compliance, we'll still have the applicants provide the documentation to show that they meet these criteria in case something changes and just to be verifying this information for us. But this is the map that they will be using to show if they're eligible or not, the basics for it. Next slide, please. And then we just want to talk about three other pieces that are important with this. The first one is that this only affects the minimum parking standards for development. An applicant can still provide more parking than this amount if they feel like it for their individual project needs. So this only affects one side of the scale of how much parking you can provide. If they choose, they can provide more than these minimum standards still. The second part is the IOC does not affect the areas in the city where parking minimums are already lowered. So places like the central part of downtown that already have lower minimum standards than this, they wouldn't be affected by this change. They could still use what's already in place. And then lastly, a very important piece, projects that submit a completed land use application during this effective period of the IOC would be vested to these standards. So if while this IOC is in effect, someone turns in an application that it's deemed complete, then they would be vested towards these standards. Next slide.
So for the, I'm going to speak to us to the basis for our recommendation. As we explained a little earlier in our presentation, portions of the current land use code parking requirements do not conform to the Substitute House Bill twenty-three forty-three ceilings on parking minimums. So this IOC is intended to correct those inconsistencies. Under this table, if you look at the highlighted portions, those are the portions that are in our land use code now in various different districts. The first one is general land use district, the second column is downtown, third is Bell Red, and then the last one is East Gate. But those yellow highlights are those items that do not conform to the land, to the state requirements. So just wanted to highlight those so you can kind of see visually where we have inconsistencies with the state regulations. So the other thing that I wanted to touch on here is that we are adjusting and proposing those adjustments based on the demonstrated needs of proposed and built projects. So staff's recommendation is based on what we are seeing developers propose and are building developments using the right-sized parking, either allowed in the code or through a parking study that Mr. Brennan mentioned earlier. We have examples of also some affordable housing projects that went even lower, such as to point-two-five space per unit through the provisions of the under sixty percent AMI units as allowed in the land use code now. And that project has been successful and we have been able to see that they could utilize the lowered parking, again, based on need as opposed to just a random requirement. So we are seeing more and more projects being proposed to, for asking for reduced parking in order to, again, to right-size their need and to make sure that they build the right amount of parking spaces. The other piece that I want to touch on is that our proposed point-seven-five per unit does in fact align with the more recently adopted standards that the council has taken on in similar transit-oriented districts. If you look at the red circled numbers in Bell Red, for instance, in both affordable housing as well as market rate multifamily, in certain transit-oriented districts, the requirement is already at point-seven-five per unit. And then East Gate TOD, another recently adopted chapter, that requirement is also at point-seven-five per unit. So our, the proposal, staff's proposal now for the IOC requirements are in fact in alignment with some of these more recently adopted standards. So a couple of things worth touching on, just as a reminder, these new standards are for developments, as Eric and I touched on, near frequent transit service. So these are urban growth areas and affordable and only for affordable housing, market rate multifamily housing and housing for seniors and people with disabilities. There is no impact to requirements affecting single-family homes or single-family neighborhoods, either when they're, the single-family home is owner-occupied or used as rentals. There's no effect of this IOC on those regulations. Also, where parking study is available to request a departure from minimum requirements, such as in downtown Bell Red and East Gate TOD, this is still an avenue available to modify the requirement. So we are not taking away that provision to allow a parking study to reduce a set requirement in the code. Next slide, please. So the effects of the interim official control, if it's adopted, the ordinance will become effective in five days. The city would be required to hold a public hearing within sixty days after adoption of the interim official control. And then either adopt permanent ordinance within six months or a new interim official control would have to be, would be required, again, with another public hearing in order to make that extension happen. And that's a six-month extension that could happen again with another public hearing. The next steps that we would be engaging in would be to start communicating and soliciting input from stakeholders and the community. We would be preparing related studies as needed in order to present the best information and the right amount of information to, for consideration as part of the development of permanent regulations. Next slide, please. In terms of public engagement, we are envisioning three modes of outreach. We, there is a process for set of requirements, including noticing and public hearing. This would be a land use code amendment, so it would follow the process for decision. And we would also be engaging, again, with stakeholders through direct contact and discussions. This is getting their information, getting their, to understand their priorities as well as concerns with any any changes that we are proposing or we're considering. Lastly, we will maintain an online presence, especially in light of the limitations on face-to-face interactions and public gatherings, so that we have an active webpage with current information for the public and to be able to explain the progression of the code amendment. We will also be setting up a mailbox for those who wish to send comments so that we are able to get as much input as possible from the public and other interested parties. So next slide, please, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Brennan to close.
So just, thank you, Trisna. So just concluding, we are here again this evening seeking council action on an interim official control, which is ordinance sixty-five thirteen, which would amend the land use code and reduce minimum parking requirements for housing developments. Mayor, we are here this evening to answer any questions that council members may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good presentation. I'm going to go through, starting with Councilmember Lee, then Barxale, Robertson's on, Deputy Mayor Newhouse, Stokes, and then me. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. One is, just to confirm, this interim official control is then to conform to the state law, right? Which you mentioned, State House Bill twenty-three forty-three to, so that we have the same point-seven-five space per unit?
So, Councilmember, that's correct. We are offering the amendment as one option. It is to confirm, conform with the state requirements. And this point-seven-five aligns with the state requirements. And as Trisna described, there are other options, but this is the one that we feel is appropriate.
Yes, and it supports the city's goal to provide more affordable housing by reducing housing costs. So I agree, right?
Yeah.
I like what you're doing. The only question I have is by looking at your presentation, there's a question regarding how's a parking provision for for staff and visitors? You know, I wasn't clear. What's the number there? Who decides, who determines how many spaces per unit? Or what's the basis for the determination? How many, how much space is necessary per unit? Is there something up to the staff and the developer to come up with? Or is something the city has something to say about?
Trisna, do you want to, would you respond to that one?
Yes, of course. Councilmember Lee, thanks for the question. So typically, for staff and visitor parking, the requirement I believe that you're referring to is for housing for seniors and people with disabilities. So that requirement is where the applicant would be proposing a certain number of parking spaces to meet that need, to meet the need of employee and staff and visitor parking. And the city would be reviewing that proposal parking count. Normally, what we normally see is they do provide a parking study. And the parking study does involve providing comparable levels that has been successfully provided in other projects that is similar. So there is a good comparative basis for us to review it and for us to make sure that, in fact, the parking that is being proposed would meet the needs of the project. And that's the criteria that we review that under.
I would imagine it's a lot less than the requirement for the residents per unit, right? Otherwise, no matter what you do with the requirement for residents or for the units, if you decide for some reason you need to have a thousand employees and visitors for, you know, ten unit apartments, that would not make sense. So there must be some some consideration, you know, is it or isn't?
That, that's correct. There is consideration is for, for those facilities, for those developments where it's for seniors and people with disabilities. It really depends on the type of care and kind of type of service that they're providing to understand what their parking need for, how many parks they're gonna need, for instance.
Okay, so the recommendation you're making now, the change you are making for regular residents, you know, that you're changing the requirement to point seven five. So there's no mention, and that, which means to me, it's no requirement for staff and visitors, right? So the, the requirement would be zero.
That is correct, except for downtown, where in downtown, there is a requirement for visitor parking. There is a provision in there that's adopted as part of downtown livability that requires visitor parking, not staff.
Clear in the recommendation you're making? I didn't notice, yeah, I think there was a letter from former council Kevin Wallace that mentioned perhaps there's some confusion as to whether this requirement applies to, you know, the housing unit we're talking about. I would imagine that should not be additioned. The requirement we recommend would be point seven five space per unit period, which includes staff and visitors, right?
So let me chime in on the response here. So the, the provision that you're speaking to is the requirement, there is a specific requirement in the downtown code for visitors parking at a rate of one stall per twenty units in a multifamily, in a multifamily project. Right now, we are not proposing to amend that. But we do want to look at that provision as part of the broader study that we engage in when we go through the permanent regulation development. Because as was noted in that email that you responded to, that provision doesn't exist elsewhere in the city. But we have heard from residents and tenants in, in buildings in other areas of the city that visitor and visitor parking is challenging because it's not provided or provided at a level that's appropriate. So we want to take a look at that specifically before we propose any amendment, and so we're not advancing that this evening.
So what, so are we, what are we approving tonight? Are we approving? What, are we not gonna do it tonight? Or are we gonna separate the two out downtown from the rest and then address it separately?
So what we are proposing is to amend the minimum parking requirement down to point seven five. And, and that would be in areas where it's currently above that. There are some areas of the city where it's already at that level or below. So that is the only change that we're advancing under the interim control ordinance before council tonight is to lower to point seven five, the minimum parking requirement where it doesn't already exist at that level or below.
How about the requirement for the staff visitors parking?
We are, we are not.
That remains the same as twenty one per twenty units?
That's correct for downtown only.
Only for downtown?
Yeah.
So that's clear.
So we're gonna leave that, we're going to leave that in, we're not proposing a change to that provision this evening.
Okay, but just for downtown, that the rest of the place, the other places will be exempt, that we know parking requirement for staff and visitors, right?
Currently, that is the case for multifamily, there are requirements for senior housing. Well, and for disabled, disabled residents to have staff and visitor parking, but that, we're not proposing to change that either.
Well, I think Mr. Wallace demonstrated the dilemma. If that doesn't change, you know, if you build too many units.
Council member Lee?
Yeah.
I'm gonna stop you here and come back to you.
Okay.
Council member Barksdale.
All right. Thanks, Mike and Trisna for your, for your presentation. I think this is a win-win situation, right? I mean, it's encouraging more affordable housing that we need in the community and making progress against our affordable housing strategy. And lowering the cost of that development for developers, so I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Council member Robertson.
Um, so I have a lot of questions and comments. First, we don't do a lot of interim official controls and emergency ordinances and so I'm glad that we're gonna be taking a study and that we're gonna have a public hearing as required in sixty days so that the public can weigh in on this. We've had a lot of comments, all supportive over email today. My question is, is this going to get sent to the planning commission for drafting final regulations or is staff recommending this stays with council?
I, I think at, at this point, as far as the next step, we'd certainly interested in any suggestion the council would have. But generally, a land use code amendment would go to the planning commission for consideration and then come back to the council for final action.
Okay, and so when will council decide that issue?
Well, I, I think what we would need to do is, first of all, if the council chooses to advance the interim official control this evening, we could come back for further direction on that, or the council could provide that direction this evening on how you would like to process the permanent regulation.
Okay, it would be good to have, especially when we know the scope of the study. It would be good to have a a choice to make with regard to the timing on, and now if COVID, this, if we continue not being able to meet, then it's gonna have to stay with us, but because the planning commission won't be meeting, but it'd be good to have a estimate of timing on that because the longer we have interim official controls in place, the less certainty there is for what the final determination is gonna be. And I'd like to get to a final determination after a period of study. So I don't know that we are in the position to make that call tonight. Second, when it comes to the studying, I think that it's really important that we have the right number. The, I'm hearing from a lot of different developers that the number might be from the basic, from the studies that people have put forward to the staff, lower than point seven five. I'm also hearing that the I T E manual, which is stands for Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's the manual my colleagues might recall, that had the different ratio for transportation impacts that we use in our impact fees. They also look at parking requirements for different scenarios. So I'd like to have those come forward as part of the information that's generated in developing final regulations because that has, there's a lot of study that goes into that and it has lower numbers for areas where there's super high, high concentration of people and transit. It's not just a one size fits all and what we have in the, in this draft ordinance is kind of a one size fits all. So that should be part of the study. I'd also like to make sure that we look at the impacts with regard to whether areas have or do not have street parking. Because if the number's not right and we have spillover parking, it could potentially impact the area around the development, which could be a commercial area or a residential area. But it also could result in real problem for the development itself if there's no street parking. So I, I think we'd like to, I'd like to understand the impacts on that. So anyway, so with that said, I know that one of the things that you mentioned and we've talked about before is that a lot of people do put forward transportation or parking studies as part of their applications. And we've talked about making it, making the decision on that, on whether there's a lower parking requirement come earlier in the process before people spend a million dollars on a plan that they can't use if the parking is denied. And I know that's a policy call on the council. I didn't know if that's something that the department could initiate as an administrative rulemaking to allow an earlier decision on that? Or whether that has to come to council for a decision? And that question's for Mike.
So that you're, you're describing the departure process. And so we are looking at that. We've gotten quite a bit of feedback, particularly since the downtown livability code update occurred, which provided a kind of a flexible departure process that includes, you know, the parking study option. And so we're, we're taking a close look at that, not just related to the parking and how decisions get made, but also related to other departures that have been proposed in the patterns, I guess, way to describe it. So it may require an amendment to the code to make that more of an administrative decision than currently exists in the, in the procedures that are outlined in the city code. So we would need to come back to the council on that, but it is something that we are looking at to see if there's a more efficient way to provide earlier certainty for the developers because that lowers their risk if they know upfront what the expectations are. So we understand that concern and we're looking at it.
Great.
Thank you for that. Council member Robertson, I'm gonna stop you there, but I'll get back to you, okay?
Yeah, I have more comments. Thank you.
Council members on.
Um, yes, thank you. I think it is super important to right size the parking needs and support affordable, affordable housing. So I'm glad we're doing that and also aligning our recently adopted standards to this so that there's more consistency with what we're trying to do. I like the map with the yellow and green areas, so it's really clear about what we're trying to do. A couple of other comments, the, the broader look in downtown. So are we still looking at a curb management study for downtown? And will this visitor parking be part of that discussion?
Curb management is a topic that is getting a lot of discussion as we're thinking about the evolution of transportation and, and transit service, both private and public to downtown and other areas of the city. Right now, it is not a funded project, but something that we're looking at, advancing, I don't know the specific timing. The transportation department is kind of the lead department, but obviously working with community development, development services and others on that. So more to come, I think, on that. As far as visitor parking, no, I would say that is not probably in the equation when it comes to curbside management in our more urban areas. We would rather see that happening and being accommodated on the properties where the developments are occurring.
Okay, so then the visitors parking may be then more of a broader, so right now we're only looking at housing. But when I think about visitor parking, then other buildings and parking might also come into play here.
That, that's absolutely correct. So visitor parking is a pretty broad term to apply. So what we're dealing with is a fairly narrow slice of the parking requirements this evening just related to multifamily housing projects, both affordable and market rate housing. But when you deal, when you layer in the commercial uses, retail uses, et cetera, that whole parking equation and how roads get used, how curbsides get used gets complicated in a hurry. This is hopefully a very strategic and pointed amendment to deal with affordable housing barrier and to align with the state statutes.
Yeah, so I think that when we are looking at curb management in downtown, I do think, Mike, that the broader just cars and, and movements needs to be in play. And then my, my last comment is, I also believe that we should be looking at how we provide a more rapid approval of those project specific parking reduction requests. Because, you know, when you are in design, usually parking's on the bottom. So if you're gonna be making some changes to that, it potentially changes your structural systems and your footprint. And so it impacts everything else in the building.
Understood. And, and as I responded to council member Robertson's question, I, I think the, trying to find a way to provide that, a higher level of certainty earlier in the process is certainly a goal, while at the same time balancing the, the ability for the community to influence the projects as well. So there's, there's a balancing act we've got to do there, but it is something that we are absolutely taking a look at.
Yeah, so maybe you could map out a, a way to the process that still gives us a balance of the two. Thank you.
Thank you, member. Thank you, council members on. Deputy mayor Newen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Trisna, thank you so much for the, for the presentation and you know, this is a lot of great conversation and questions by my, my colleagues. So most of my questions have been answered, or Mike will be following up shortly on them. But, you know, I agree with council member Barksdale here, a lot, a lot of win, 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 win situations here with, you know, aligning our parking with the state legislation or requirements. Moves our affordable housing strategy forward and obviously it's, it's, you know, this was a, this was a need before the pandemic, and I think it's gonna be an even bigger need once we get through it, whenever that is. So, you know, I'm very supportive of this. I think that the business and developer community is very supportive of this. I think residents or individuals that are working in Bellevue and are looking for affordable housing in Bellevue are gonna be supportive of this. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm ready to definitely move forward. The one question I did have for you, Mike, that hadn't been addressed yet is, do you have any insight into how many, you know, projects this might impact pretty quickly? Or how many developers are, you know, getting ready to submit their permits now that we've made this change in the minimum parking requirements? I'm just curious if, if you have any insight into that, what this might mean moving forward here in the short term.
So I, I, I don't have a specific answer to that. I don't have my pipeline report in front of me, so I can see what's coming in the queue right now. But I, I can tell you that, that most, all of the affordable housing projects and, and a large number of the multifamily housing projects, parking has been a point of discussion and yeah, burn. So I would say that most any project coming through the, the pipeline right now, submitting applications would benefit from this unless they're in an area like in the middle of downtown where the parking level is below the point seven five to start. So I think, I think this will have a benefit to those projects and providing a higher level of certainty and a lower cost as they move through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Council member Stokes.
Yeah, one of the good things about coming towards the end is a lot of the questions have been asked. I, I appreciate what the deputy mayor Newen House just said on it, and basically that's, that's the way I feel about it. I, I think it's, it, it's really exciting coming from the work we did in two thousand seventeen on the affordable housing. And we've known for a long time that this is a growing problem with development of any type of project in terms of the cost of, of parking. And I'm just really glad we're addressing this. It's an interim ordinance. I, I don't think we need to, you know, get too much bogged down in discussing other things that are tangential. We have a lot of other things brought up to this that we need to get into, but in terms of what we're asked to do tonight, I think it's, it's right on. And I, I think, and I'm, I hope we don't set up any processes going down the line that make this take a lot longer to get done. We get the interim thing done, but the final, let's see if we can also keep that streamlined and not get it bogged down too much in, in process either. So I'm all ready for it and I, I really appreciate the work that staff's done and, and appreciate also the very supportive and very thoughtful comments we've gotten from the community. And it's not just the commercial development community, it's a lot of other different people who understand that this is important. And it's exciting to see also people acknowledging that the affordable housing aspect is very, very important and they're glad to support something that will help that too. So it's, it's a win-win all around.
Great, thank you, council member Stokes. So I'm in full support of this ordinance as written. But, and it does help create affordable housing by lower the cost of development, but it does not incentivize it. And I hope that in the sixty day public period, that there is a conversation of how to incentivize affordable housing. For example, you could bring it down to point seven five with this ordinance, but with a parking study, you could bring it down to point five if you were to include affordable housing. So I hope that's part of the discussion that goes on in the next sixty days. I look forward to hearing from the stakeholders in the community on that. You know, we've seen examples in our city, the maiden rode in, and I've seen that there and at other multifamily properties that are in walkable neighborhoods near transit, they're, just have a vast amount of unused parking. So it would be great to move on this. And in terms of visitor parking, And in terms of visitor parking, now that I'm a resident of downtown, I can speak to this. There is not enough visitor parking in downtown. It's very hard for people who live in multifamily to have guests and visitors because there really is no place for them, not enough places for them to park as it is. So I would not be in favor of changing that, but I do support this. So I'm going to go back around. I know that Councilmember Lee and Robertson had more they want to say and others may want to add as well. So Councilmember Lee.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. As I was talking earlier about the staff and visitor parking, I don't mean that, you know, it would be necessary to remove it all. I think Mayor said it very well. We need to look at different situations, you know. However, I just want to be sure that, because the reason for doing this is to encourage more affordable housing by lowering housing costs. So that makes sense. So we don't want to inevitably to apply some unnecessary, unanticipated, you know, cost by requiring something else that may not be necessary. So that's all I want to do. So if you can make sure that's clear and that's treated, you know, that'd be fine. The second one I want to add, as I want to follow up on Deputy Mayor's question. When we do this, we obviously want to encourage more affordable housing. So do we, I know your answer is, I think the question is, I would ask, what's a supply and demand? Do we know by doing this, how many units do you think we can anticipate as increase? Obviously, we don't know for sure, but I think it'd be, as you mentioned though, I mean, if you do that, obviously, there would be more. The question is, you know, how much more? Or if there's something else we can do that does more. It's always nice and better to have deliberate plans and doing things that we know there's expectation of what we want to get to. So if you don't have it now, I think it would be good to have that. So when we go into the discussion of this topic, ultimately, throughout the affordable housing conversation, and we know what we expect and we know what we need, and we know how to work toward that goal. So, and the third one is, I think it was mentioned about curb use and change and so on, that relates to transportation. I think that makes a lot of sense because when we talk about housing, affordable housing relates to people living in our city, in the area where housing is located. So I think amenities and transportation system, how to get people there, how to get in and out. It's all part of the equation. So I think we need to, at least when we're doing one thing, I know we probably don't have answers for everything, but I think it'd be good to be aware of it, to get the ball rolling. People who may be affected, like transportation or others, that we all can be in the conversation. So it's easier for us to see the decision we make can make, you know, a more complete difference. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Barksdale.
No further comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
So picking up where I left off, the other things I'd like to see us bring forward as we study this to make our final regulations would be to see what the, both the need and performances of visitor parking, as well as how the performance for the districts in Belred and Eastgate, which has been at 0.75 per unit, how that's performing, if that's working about right, if there's excess parking, if there's not enough parking. And I also wanted to thank you for bringing this forward. We have been wanting to see a lot of things that are going to help with affordable housing, including to incentivize it for a while. To that end, I'd like to see in the next one to two quarters, the MFTE incentive where it's citywide for multifamily come forward to figure out this administrative rule or timing on the parking study. East Main, I know, is coming because that could provide a lot of housing, including affordable housing, and it is absolutely TOD. And I know we're bringing forward the ZEROS Lot Line for condos for townhomes that will help. And I hope that all of those will come forward and be completed this year because I think this is the year when we need to get this going. We have possibly a short lull here, but the building's going to continue when we get on that upside of the J of this current situation. So let's get it done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers on.
Oh, there we go. I'm unmuted now. You know, I just keep thinking about the fact that this is about right-sizing the parking for the use of the building, who's in the building, incentivizing affordable housing. We can talk about the 0.75, the 0.5, the 0, but ultimately, it's about people, people that are going to be living in these units. And so it's probably a bit of a balance between the folks looking at these units and whether if they have needs for parking and the building doesn't have, can be built less expensively with less parking, really matching the people to the building itself. And as much as possible, trying to right-size the parking for the need. Because otherwise, you know, we keep talking about percentages, but ultimately, I think it's more about the people and what their needs are in those units. So I trust that we'll, through the outreach, get information and feedback and that staff are looking at the different studies and information and working with the affordable housing developers to really understand what the needs are. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. No real further comments other than to say, staff, thanks for bringing this forward and the hard work on this. And yeah, ready to move forward and let's get it done.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to ask you, Deputy Mayor, to play some motion before us, including the amended date.
Happy to do that. I move to adopt ordinance 6513 as amended in our desk packet to correct the state legislative changes will go into effect June 11, 2020, imposing an interim official control setting, reduced minimum parking standards in the Land Use Code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service, providing for severability investing and establishing an effective date.
That goes. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we have one more important item on our agenda tonight. And this is with the CDPG dollars that we discussed last week. Mr. Miyaki, can you tee that up for us, please?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. Ordinance 6514 executes the council direction provided staff at last Monday's council meeting with regard to the allocation of approximately $1 million of CDPG funds. Joining us this evening is Nathan McCollum, Deputy City Manager, to provide counsel with a brief staff report and to answer any questions council may have before taking action this evening. Nathan?
Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse and Council. I hope you can hear me all right.
I think so.
Very good. Thank you. Again, as you pointed out, we return this evening for the council's consideration to allocate both new community development block grant funding, or CDPG, and reallocate past-year unspent CDPG funds. And it does follow up the direction the council gave at its special meeting last Monday, May 11. Next slide, please. Today's staff is seeking the adoption of ordinance 6514. It would achieve all the objectives the council directed related to special CDPG funding and satisfies requirements of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. In summary, ordinance 6514 will accept the new special CDPG funding, allocate past unspent CDPG funds for designated services, and authorize the necessary CDPG plan amendments as required by HUD, which are called an action plan and a citizen participation plan. Next slide. The material today is divided into two sections. I will briefly review the guiding principles and direction from council that were discussed in last week's special meeting. And using that direction, I will share the staff's recommendation for an additional agency for council's consideration this evening. Next slide, please. As I explained to the council in the prior meeting, HUD amended its process in recognition of the urgency under COVID-19 to have this special CDPG funding awarded as quickly as possible. And HUD shortened both its public comment period and plans review period to five days. As of 5:00 p.m. today, HUD's public comment period has been satisfied. And no public comments came in direct response to the HUD public notice. Three communications, however, came into the city of Bellevue regarding the city's public notice of ordinance 6514 and are a part of normal written communications to the city. Two of those comments were in support of the ordinance and one suggested increasing funding for emergency financial assistance. Provided that council were to adopt the ordinance this evening, staff would follow by submitting CDPG plans to HUD for review and approval. Next slide, please. The council may recall from last Monday that we used four guiding principles for deciding these special CDPG service allocations, and I provide them on the screen just to refresh our memories. They were to target the greatest needs, find the best value for the investment, seek expedient approval of service providers, and reach traditionally underserved populations with specialized focus on cultural and linguistic diversity. Next slide, please. This slide was also shown at the last meeting and became the direction from council. The list met all four principles and targeted the top service needs, which were homelessness, homeless services, emergency financial assistance, childcare, and legal assistance, which includes a substantial portion for domestic violence. And the council's direction left staff with one task to complete, which was to find an additional provider for emergency financial assistance that would also improve upon principle number four to reach traditionally underserved populations. Next slide, please. Staff quickly began to search for potential providers, keeping in mind principle number four. And that council also emphasized their critical importance of vetting by the Human Services Commission. That council emphasized wanting to act quickly. And in addition, staff evaluated potential providers' capacity to manage the complexity of CDPG documentation and effectively deliver on the service. In doing so, staff also examined the agency's past capacity, quality of service, and its ability to navigate contracts with city funds in Bellevue and surrounding jurisdictions. And the recommendation today meets all of these objectives, which is the Indian Association of Western Washington, or IAWW. IAWW has demonstrated to be a trusted messenger to diverse communities in Bellevue, including immigrants and refugees. IAWW has already been vetted through the rigorous process of the Human Services Commission and in fact, is already a contracted agency with the city of Bellevue for other services. IAWW has the capacity to take on the additional service of emergency financial assistance and provide the necessary documentation to satisfy CDPG programming terms. Next slide, please. A few more bits on IAWW on the slide here. As I mentioned, one strength is that the agency has a focus on immigrants and refugees. Plus, IAWW expands its reach by staying connected with partner agencies, some examples you see on the screen, with significant focus on the east side and particularly in Bellevue. Staff of the IAWW speaks 14 different languages of Asia and Latin America. And in addition, IAWW uses outreach ambassadors to collaborate with other communities of color to expand its services even deeper citywide. For these reasons and more, we feel confident to recommend to the council IAWW to, for this special CDPG funding. Next slide, please. As council directed staff at its prior meeting, the other agency that is listed to provide emergency financial assistance with special CDPG funding is HopeLink. And in response to principle four, which is to reach underserved populations, HopeLink sent us its commitment statement for increasing diverse outreach. And I wanted to just share that with the council. HopeLink affirms to the council and the community its commitment to diversity, confidentiality, multilingual and culturally relevant services while increasing its provision of emergency financial assistance to those in critical need, including immigrants and refugees. HopeLink also uses partnerships to expand its reach to more diverse and underserved populations, some of which you see on the screen. And for the council's clarification, ERIC stands for East Side Refugee and Immigrant Coalition. And MCRC stands for the Muslim Community Resource Center. Next slide, please. Again, this is really good news that tonight council may meet its stated objectives with the special CDPG funding and take quick action for critical needs in the community. Ordinance 6514 meets all the criteria as directed by the council, as well as the requirements of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Assistant Director Tony Esparsa from the Parks and Community Services Department is present with me tonight in case the council has further questions. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate staff's ability to get this before us as soon as it was possible and to bring it back for a decision tonight. We need to get those dollars out to the community. So very much appreciated. I'm going to ask for comments or questions in this order, starting with Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, who's the council liaison to the Human Service Commission, then Councilmember Stokes, Robertson, Barksdale, Lee's on, and me. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Nathan, Tony, thank you for working so fast again for us and bringing this forward with your recommendation for an additional provider that meets our needs in regards to the underserved communities. I think it's a great choice, familiar with the organization, and it hits all the different criteria there, as well as it's been previously vetted by the Human Services Commission. So I really appreciate that and as well as my colleagues that felt that was an important qualifier. I also think there's something to learn from this as well, and certainly I'll be raising the question with the Human Services Commission if, you know, we need to look for additional providers that do serve these underserved communities. It might be something for us to take a harder look at the next time around this question comes up and want to make sure that we're serving everybody in Bellevue. So again, really appreciate the hard work. Love the recommendation. Happy to move forward. And again, great job.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I think the Deputy Mayor just stated it. I can't think of anything else to add to that. It is, well, I want to say I appreciate the fact that when we need to move fast, we can move fast. And I think that's something to keep in mind. I do think in the future, things are going to accelerate some. So, and we can move fast and do a good job at the same time. Thanks very much to staff and to the council for the good discussion last time. I'm ready to vote for it. It's great. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, I'm supportive to move forward. I think that this is a good mix of nonprofits to give the money and the uses as well is a really good mix. I wish we had more CDPG money, but this is double what we usually have and we'll have more later this year. So let's get the money out to people ASAP because they need it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what other council members have already said in terms of really excited about this addition of IAWW and the mix of nonprofits and partners. One of the thoughts I had after, soon after our last meeting, that I was just curious about is, is there a way to see sort of the distribution of the community that our funds have supported? And to inform sort of understanding where there might be ongoing gaps in support?
So we will take your question and prepare something that we can return to the council with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
My name is Mayor. One, I want to thank the staff for doing wonderful work. And of course, the city for their swift action to come up with the program money to serve the people. their swift action to come up with a program money to serve the people, uh, during this crisis. So this, uh, it's a, just, just a compliment, you know, everybody pat on the back. And, uh, this is also, you know, I have two goals, two objectives, uh, that for this program. One is to serve the people. This, it does. The second one is, uh, we need to reach this people that we want to serve, and the people means everybody. And I believe there's underrepresented, underserved people, uh, you know, that are out there, and we have a difficulty, a challenge of reaching out to them, and that's evidenced by, uh, the struggle we have to look for agencies, uh, that can do it, you know, that we are comfortable. And I completely support IAWW because I know of them. They've done a lot of good work, but they're, they don't have a traditional, uh, experience with HUD either, with the CDBG pro- program. But they, they are there, they're, they, we're very happy, the staff recognized it and work with them. But the sad part that I am not, uh, you know, I'm disappointed with is, is something that we have to constantly strive toward is to find more, uh, organizations. We have to find more capacity, uh, to reach this under-served, underrepresented community and people. So I think we need to keep working on it. Uh, I compliment the staff working so hard, so quickly and to, to have the AI-IAWW to, uh, do the, uh, the, the, to serve the community. But I wish that, you know, we have lots of them compete with each other, and I was hoping that this is the opportunity where we can actually build, we can actually find, we can actually have more, uh, organizations that can serve this purpose. But I think that we're still lacking in that, but I want to make sure, I appreciate the com- comment made by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Councilman Barksdale and, uh, Deputy Mayor, that we still have some work to do. Uh, let's not stop building this capacity to serve the people who need them, who are not traditionally being reached. So I have a, yeah, so that's all I have to say. So thank you for this good work, but I think we still need to do one more step.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zon.
Yes. Well, I am very grateful to staff for how quickly they've been able to move because this million dollars will save lives, right? Homeless services, financial assistance, childcare, legal assistance, domestic violence, so, so important in our community. And I appreciate, um, the staff looking at finding a organization, a community-based organization on the east side that's already doing work with our harder-to-reach communities. I think IAWW with the work they've already been doing in the North Bellevue Community Centers with lots of our seniors, um, is a good mix to the, the funding, um, organizations. Uh, one thing I will mention is that when I was at a, on a call last week with Sophia Way, I heard that they were spending an extra $120,000 a month just on the, the additional cleaning and COVID-related expenses. So I think that the costs that we're providing will be very helpful. Um, I echo Councilmember Lee in that I think what we've certainly identified here is that there are not as many community-based organizations that are familiar with CBGDG, um, funding grants and the ability to move quickly on that. So as we move forward, that may be a, a gap that we want to figure out how to help support those organizations, uh, because certainly, um, every, every one of them is filling a gap of outreach into the community as trusted messengers. So I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, I'll just say that I've been immersed in the needs of the community and the agencies that are providing services since this crisis began, and the needs in our community are on a month-to-month basis. And as, as generous as this funding is, and I'm very grateful that we are able to distribute these funds, it is not enough. And it, they're going to have to, you know, start all over again next month with all the, the needs that are in this community. So I'm very grateful, but I'm also a little frustrated and, uh, I agree with my fellow council members, you know, we just need to keep working to get more funding and to get it distributed where it's needed most. I will say that the CDBG dollars are some of the most difficult to distribute because they come with a tremendous amount of paperwork and, um, not every agency is able to provide the, um, information necessary to qualify or, uh, yeah, to qualify for these HUD dollars. So I understand how hard it is to distribute these, and this is a very thoughtful recommendation from staff. So I want to thank you so much and just encourage us all to continue thinking about the resources available for our community as we continue to recover because it's going to be a while before, um, the, this type of extra funding is not needed anymore. So, um, with that, I thank everybody for the thoughtful discussion. I will ask for a motion from our Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt ordinance number 6514, which allocates new community development block grant coronavirus dollars and reallocating unspent dollars from the prior year.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. This brings to a close this meeting, and I want to thank everybody for their participation, their thoughtfulness. These are a big deal issues that I'm really pleased that staff was able to work with us and get them before us and we could move forward. So thank you. The meeting is adjourned.